Take roll, please.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, district goals. We have three goals. First being student achievement, the second being financial prudence, and the third being community engagement. We take all three very seriously. All three of them will be reflected in every vote and every item on this agenda, and we'll move forward with that to recognition.
We do not have any recognition this evening, Mr. Neso. With that, we'll move to the superintendent's report, and our communication coordinator, Dan Faust, is gonna give us an update on one of the initiatives that we've put into place this fall.
Good evening. I just wanted to, as Cameron mentioned, provide an update on the initiative that we have started this year, elementary nights at our home football games. And I just wanted to give a summary, even though we have one more left tomorrow, about some of the great things that have been happening in connecting our elementary schools with our high school sports program. So, the way that these have been structured this year is Thursday before every home football game, every home football game, we are recognizing and featuring a different elementary school in our district. And the Thursday before each home game, we have a pep rally, which features the...some of the football players with Coach Serino, are some of our cheerleading cheerleaders, along with our cheerleading coach. And they come in and do a few cheers and fire up the students at the end of the day for the bus ride home. It's been a fantastic experience all the way around, in terms of engaging the elementary school students, and in terms of connecting those high school students back to, in many cases, the elementary schools that they attended. So, they've been very exciting, and lots of high energy at these pep rallies. The students are encouraged, when they come to the football games, to arrive early and help us form a tunnel for the players to run through. But they are there a little bit early to be on the field, see some of the high school football players practicing, and just being down on the field, I think is a great opportunity and experience for the students. A lot of them bring signs. The principals are there for each event, and so it's a nice way. The teachers have been showing up as well, so it's just another nice connection to make outside of the classroom and at Peck Tan Stadium. Pictures of the tunnel, which is always an adventure to get the kids organized and far enough away from each other so that the players have room to run through. But it has been another great experience for the students and for the players as well, to have that support as they enter the field before the game. We've selected at each home football game, three honorary representatives for each of the schools, an honorary captain. That student goes out with our football captains to midfield before the game, participates in the coin toss. We've had different variations of it each week. We've actually had one of the students flip the coin. We've had one of the students actually, with Coach Serino's coaching beforehand, calling what they want the decision to be if they win the toss. And some pictures also, which I didn't put up there, but pictures with referees and the referee staff. So, great experience for that student. An honorary PA announcer, who, again, we've run the gamut. First week, person was a little bit shy, and so she was our spotter until she got comfortable in being in front of the microphone. And then we've had kids that we've literally had to drag out of the PA announcer's booth. And they definitely have a future in broadcasting, it seems. So, and then an honorary band member. We take a student over during the second quarter. They have a chance to meet Mr. King, get up on the platform and actually direct or conduct a brief song during a timeout. And then most of the students play an instrument or have picked up an instrument during their elementary school time. And I always try and connect whatever they play, be it trombone, percussion, with that section in the high school group. And the high schoolers, the high school students have just been wonderful throughout this experience. The band, the football team, the captains, really any touch point between the elementary school and the high school, the pep rallies, have been a tremendous experience for the elementary students. And the high school students have really embraced this and show a lot of enthusiasm when the elementary students are around. We have also produced, thanks to Mr. Benson, some videos for each week. Two and a half to three-minute videos created for each school. They're shown at the football game at the end of halftime. It gives us a chance to highlight the elementary school. We've interviewed teachers, staff, students, administrators. They've taken on some different personalities based on the school, which I think is great as well. And then we provide the links to the school, and they forward them in some e-newsletters. They've used them on social media, and we've also used them on our website. So, quick summary of elementary nights. Our final one is tomorrow night. We'll have Maraski Elementary Night at the football game, so any questions?
It's been great watching it. I love to watch Lou get them all fired up. He goes on there, cheers with them, and it's been really a great idea.
Outstanding initiative, really.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things Dan and I were talking earlier this week, one of the things, you know, Dan will put these on Facebook every time, and if you look at the comments, it's now, "This is such a great idea. How are we gonna expand this beyond football?" So, there's some sports that, you know, five home games, five elementary schools worked out perfectly. And so, we don't want to take a great idea and continue to repeat it so many times where it doesn't have the same special feel. But we are looking at how we can support some of our other teams and events with some elementary nights as well.
We got a board night.
That's right. Sarar Board Evening Night, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say, and Keith, I hope I don't embarrass you, but Keith Zimack is over there. He's sitting in the blue shirt. I don't know if any of you have met Keith before. But Keith took over in June as our maintenance foreman to help out. And Steve was up here last month sharing all the summer projects that we did. And Steve leads those from an administrative role. Keith is the guy who's in the field doing the work, leading the maintenance department. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that he's done and led the department. And Colonel, when you talk about light poles, and you know, he's the guy that gets it done and leads the department. So, thank you, Keith, publicly for what you've done, stepped in. You've done a fantastic job. So, that's Keith, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, Keith.
And that ends my report to the community.
Alright, public comment. We have none. Brings us to approval of minutes. We have the regular board meeting from September 7th and September 21st. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? Treasurer can take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Brings us to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I have three items for your consideration tonight. The first one is the financial report for the month ending September 30th. It could be found in Exhibit A, and I also have my monthly presentation, so I'm gonna make my way to the podium. Alright, so I'm gonna be brief with the presentation, because not, since I presented the budget and the five-year forecast, the last regular meeting, not much has changed. Our general fund summary, I know it's a little hard to see from the screen, but you should have it on... the PowerPoint should be on your Chromebooks. And overall, from September 30th of this year to last year, revenues are up by $700,000, and that's primarily due to one-time payments that we received in other revenues. There was $200,000 for workers' comp rebate that they've given. Workers' comp's given it to all the businesses that they're invested in as previous overcharges. Also, our interest is up from this time of year to about $70,000. And we had tuition from prior years from other districts that was...for last fiscal year, it was just delayed. That should've been received last fiscal year, but it was just delayed on the state's end that we received it in July. And then also, there was a $300,000 tip settlement that we had over the summer as well. So, those were the reasons why revenues are higher compared to last September. And then expenditures are also slightly higher compared to last September, and it's primarily due to purchase services. It's just more of a timing. There were a few purchase orders that were paid for last fiscal year that was carried over to this year that were paid in July, and then also the timing of some contracts that were paid a little earlier. So, those are the, kind of the highlights. The rest of the slides are the same from before. The five-year forecast, I have forecasted $70 million in revenues, 70.6 million in revenues. Today, we received 27.9. We're anticipated to receive another 42.7 million through the rest of the fiscal year.
Not a bad day, 27 million.
What's that?
Not a bad day, 27 million.
No, it's due to the, largest chunk is due to property taxes, as the first settlements we received in August, August and September. I'm sorry, July and August. And then, as you can see, the bar graph comparing revenues of prior years are biggest chunks, the property taxes and the state foundation. They're pretty much in line from the previous two fiscal years. General fund expenditures, the point that we use is 25% of the fiscal year has passed, which is three months, and then also six out of 24 pays its pass, which is also 25%. We're at a 27.7% expenditure encumbrance rate. And although that's slightly higher, that's normal for this time of year as items are encumbered early at the beginning of the year, and some purchases are made. So, that'll even out as the year goes on. And we're forecasting out the revenues and will be, or the expenditures, and we're on target for the rest of the year as of this point. And then the next chart, expenditures through September. On the chart on the left, you can see the expenditure percent to where it was in the previous two years. The yellow graph is the three-year average. So, you can see for the most part that salary and benefits, they're in line. Purchase services varied a little bit. The same as capital outlay, and dead other charges is in line. And then, on the right-hand side is the expenditures by category with the actual amounts. So, for salaries, it's in line to last year. The blue line looks slightly higher in 2016. That was while we still had 25 pay, so there was an additional pay that year through September. So, that's why that looks higher at that point in time.
I'm looking forward to never hearing that again.
Right. Me too, as. Once it catches up, then that'll be it, so. So, expenditures are on target. And then, our cash balance through September 30th. Our cash right now in the general fund is 35.5 million. Unencumbered balance with the encumbered... or the encumbered balance, and then the unencumbered balance is 31.7. Then, as you can see on the chart on the right, where we're comparing the previous two years. And then, we also monitor, every month I monitor where we set our 60-day cash reserve on hand, which at this point in time would be 11.4 million. So, we're well above that. So, that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Nope, I'm here.
Alright.
Thank you.
And the next item I have on the agenda is E-Finance Plus. This is, I'm not gonna read the statement, but it's the agreement for updating our financial system to a financial system and HR financial system, a finance and HR system all into one. It's an integrated system. Currently, we have USAS, the state software, which is basically run off an AS400, which is somewhat of a DOS system. So, this will be moving us forward into more of a web-based format. And more and more schools are going to either this or Tyler Munis, but we decided this was our best fit. The first year cost is around $61,000, then $9,622 for each year rolling out. And that cost is a first-year fee of implementation of $20,000, then the user fee of $41,000. And the agreement can be found in Exhibit B.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, George. Thanks for seconding. Duke, any discussion? I'm just, I mean, it's something you just gotta do. I mean, I worked for Master Builders in 1989, and we moved off a DOS system to a Windows-based system, so I had hair. I was a lot younger. It's time. I don't know if anybody else has any comments on it or anything. Richard?
I just was gonna comment that, obviously, we need to make this move, and George and I have talked about it before. There are some challenges that they're having with the software that we're gonna make sure to pay attention to. And, you know, the purpose is to make things more efficient. Purpose is to make things easier to report, easier to deal with the data. The current system is very difficult to do any kind of data analysis, any kind of financial analysis. It's very difficult as being kind. So, we're well aware that we do need to make the move, and, you know, the only thing I will say out loud is the miscellaneous fees. We will make sure that those are fair and reasonable. There's lots, you know, there's plenty of examples. You can go on the internet. You can go in the newspapers of public software projects that go bad. And, you know, fortunately, we have the right team in place with George and his team to make sure that that doesn't happen.
This is the one that integrates the HR as well, right?
Yeah, it's integration with HR.
That makes sense.
That's something we don't have.
Especially now that we have the CAFER and your budget book. I mean, you need to be able to get that out of that so that we can have the information that we need to manage a $70 million budget. So, anybody, any further discussion? Take roll.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the next item I have is the OASBO Section 457 plan revision. What this is, currently, we have the board... previously, the board adopted an OASBO Section 457 plan to allow for, it's an annuity plan for employees. Under the plan, it allowed the company Voya, formerly was ING, under this plan. OASBO restated their plan to include another company, AXA. So, in order for us to be compliant, we need to restate the plan. I'm recommending to also include AXA as well as another option to the employees for, as an annuity. There's no cost in the district. It's just the option available to the employees.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George.
Second.
Thank you, Duke. Any discussion? George, take roll.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Nice job. That brings us to superintendent's report. Timely information?
Couple items for the board and the community. About an hour ago, you should've gotten a phone call about early... our first early release day is tomorrow, which means our students will arrive home an hour earlier. We have two days. One is tomorrow. The other one is mid-March sometime. But I just wanted to share just a brief update. I know that print is too little to see, but this is a well-planned extra hour of time that we utilize with our teachers. So, on the left side there, the elementary teachers. Aaron worked a lot with our teachers last year to develop expectations by grade level in all the core areas. Tomorrow's gonna focus on English Language Arts and Mathematics. And what we set is, what do we expect a second grader to have in terms of skills and knowledge in ELA and math when they leave? And what does a third-grade teacher expect them to enter with? So, this is a fall meeting where we're gonna sit out and sit down with a K-3 group and a 3-5 group and say, "Are those matching? Are we teaching the curriculum our kids, getting what they need by the end of the grade level, and entering with the skills that they need to continue to progress?" At the secondary level, our focus predominantly will be to continue the work we started in September, which is developing common assessments, embedded common assessments throughout our core classroom areas. So, that means, especially at the high school, let's say we have five different teachers teaching Algebra I. We want all of our Algebra I teachers to determine, here are the assessments we're all going to give, and that way, we can all compare how students are progressing. So, it doesn't matter if you have Kevin Klein or Mike Scott or Steve King or any of the other algebra teachers or math teachers, that we could see how our kids are progressing. We have those built on a quarterly basis, but those are, they're expanding those to the chapters and the units they teach. So, they'll continue that work tomorrow. And then, we've got, you know, for our related services and other groups, there's specific work to what they're doing. But those are some of the big areas of focus for tomorrow that our teachers will be working on. And we know that anytime students come home a little bit earlier, it's an inconvenience to our parents, and we balance that out. And that's why we only have two days a year. We feel that meets our needs. But hopefully, the board and our parents can see that it is a valuable use of our time and helps us to continue to improve what we do in the classrooms. Next, I just wanna give an update. We are, we have started to form the committee for our calendar. We develop our calendars two years at a time. So, we are up to develop and provide to the board draft 2018, 19, and 19, 20 calendar. We do have a calendar committee. It includes three administrators, three teachers, three support staff, and three parents. And we're finalizing those committee members, I think, the due dates next week. Thank you, Mr. Cummins, for getting any of yours in right away. We're all set to go. And we have, there is now board policy, if you remember, that changed the rules for calendar adoption. It says, "At least 30 days prior to adopting the calendar, the board shall have a public hearing on the calendar." We have typically done that during a board meeting. So, the timeline right now for the board and for our community is that December 14th, we would present to you the drafts. If we stay with our same pattern of board meetings, I think January 19th would be our regular meeting. That would be where we would adopt. The board would vote on the proposed calendars, and then we'd have those available for our families. So, just an update on where we're at, because people are already planning summer vacations and wanna know when we start. So, we should have that in the next few months.
Excellent. Remember, we said we're gonna start after Labor Day. Remember, that was the goal for this calendar?
My kids...
Did I make that up?
I don't recall that.
You don't recall that?
No, is that in the minutes?
Labor...
We can always tell.
Memorial, no school. It's what the kids want.
No, but in all seriousness, Mr. Neso, as we talked, it's a part of our 2020 plan. We are gonna do, you know, typically, we sit in a room and look, we've got 186 days to put into the calendar, 180 student days. How are they gonna work? You know, we are going to do a little more research this time to see, how can that work with a lot of our schools that are getting out a little earlier than we are. What will be interesting, Jenny and I were just at a meeting with some of our local colleagues. Everybody's got a construction project going on. So, you've got Royalton, Berea, Olmsted, or North... Olmsted Falls, North Olmsted. So, everybody's calendars the next few years are gonna be all over the place. And a lot of them are going after Labor Day, but that's for construction reasons.
And I know, I know it's a, it's far more complex than it looks, you know, with the coordinating with the Catholic schools and Polaris, all the other things that we've gotta try to coordinate with.
It's very simple. We want you to start after Labor Day and have a lot less homework in the summer.
Yes, and homework during the year. My gosh.
Duly noted.
Aaron, get right on that one.
Just wanted to share, we had a cool experience on Tuesday. Dan and Jenny and I were there with Brian Jungerberg and some, so the manager of the mall and the manager of where I'm from, obviously, as we've sent out press releases, Tuesday was the big launch of the "The Ville" t-shirt. So, we were there, and as you could see, the t-shirts are $29. Dan, Jenny, and I brought our t-shirts. I think it's like 31-something with tax. But all the proceeds from the t-shirts come back to the Strongsville Education Foundation, which is gonna support the field trips for our K-8 students. And they have youth and adult sizes, and you can also get them online. And so, just a great partnership, a great store. They were a kiosk. Now, they're right as you walk in the main entrance. I don't have, by the movie theater. So, by the movie theater. So, please visit them if you're looking for a t-shirt. They've got a lot of great stuff. But the "Ville" shirts are right as you enter at a display.
Sweet.
And then finally, Jenny's gonna give us an update on this year's greet and treat.
So, we're excited to announce the second annual greet and treat, and this is a free event for our community. I wanna thank our schools, our staff, Paul Cummins for helping, for opening the middle school for us to host it there. Dan and I met with Paul last week to kind of finalize the floor plan. We're opening it up a little bit bigger this year so that there's more space for families to walk and get their treats. The only thing we ask is a non-perishable food donation for the food bank. We'll have our bus out front to collect those items from people as they're walking in. It's from 6:00 to 7:30 at the middle school, and we're just really excited to host it again. We also have several community businesses that are gonna be on hand and offer free food samples. So, that's exciting. And again, I think all of our schools are participating. Many of our student clubs are participating, and all of the treats that they're giving out, they have donated to give out to the community. And there will also be some tables with teal pumpkins. So, for those students that aren't able to participate in the treat, there'll be non-treat items for them as well. So, we hope everybody can join us. We do ask that you come. Kids dress in costume, and I think it's gonna be a great time.
Excellent.
And that concludes timely information, unless there's questions?
Nope.
Alright, with that, I'll have Steve Brechner come up, operations manager, to give the business service report for the month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. There's two items for business services this month. The first one is transportation for non-public students. This is the ILU of payment, which is a program the state has for students who are not attending Strongsville but live... or Strongsville City Schools but live in Strongsville. We provide this when the cost of transporting them is declared impractical. So, it's Exhibit D in your agenda there, for those students and those families to receive that payment. The second item is a discussion item this time. When I took the job over, I was asked to not only look at the facilities and assess what needed to be done in them, but also to assess the equipment that we're using to maintain the district property and facilities. After receiving from Keith the list of the equipment that we're using in the maintenance department, it became very apparent that we have a salt truck/dump truck that has serviced the district very well. It was purchased in 1996, which was when I graduated high school, at least five kids ago. And it has become a truck that is not reliable on a daily basis to be used for the purpose of salting during the winter season. I did have Chuck run off the history of the maintenance on this truck, and it's quite a few pages. But the one that was most interesting is the last time that, excuse me, the vehicle was in for a comprehensive assessment for, and bringing it up to the condition that we need it to be for the season. It ended up costing, in labor alone, 35 hours to do that. So, it has served its usefulness, but I would like to propose it's time for us to purchase a new one. You've been given three quotes using state pricing, which is kind of our version of the bottom basement price, you know, no haggle. And the three trucks came in at various prices. The one that I would... and I'm going to be putting up for a proposal to purchase is the one from Valley Ford. And that one is not only the cheapest one there, but it's also one that is ready-built. We actually have had it in our shop. It got the... It got the once, twice, and three-time look-over from our mechanics. I talked to Chuck Patton today, just to, you know, prepare for this discussion. He told me it's by far one of the best trucks he's seen for what we're going to be using it for. He said it was very thoughtfully constructed. Some of the advantages of the truck, not only is it the cheapest one there, not only is it ready for immediate use once we purchase it, the other ones would have to be built. And you're looking at anywhere between a six-month and a one-year build time for that. This truck already comes built to suit our needs. It is a bigger truck than we've had, which, the reason for that, and the reason I would like to have that, is it would also be able to hold more material, whether it's salt, whether it's dirt, whatever we're transporting. Right now, and Keith can correct me if I'm wrong, but he won't because I'm not going to be. It takes three trips, right now, with our current salt truck, to salt the whole, the district. That results in, you know, man-hours, fuel, being expended, you know, the expenditure of all of that. This truck, we could get, as it's filled to capacity, we'd be able to fill it once, salt all of the property, and then get it back into the shop. And that same person can then start doing some of the work, other work that's needed in the district at that time. The parts are also conveniently the same parts that we use for our buses. Right now, the truck that we have, if we were to buy a new set of tires, or per tire, it's six hundred dollars. The tires for this new truck would be the same as our buses. So we'd be able to purchase the tires at a discounted rate, using an economy to scale. Also, the brakes, some of the components in the brakes, some of the components in the air brakes, the hydraulic lift, are all things we have in stock. So we would be able to purchase them at an additional cost, but at a reduced rate than if we're, you know, when we're purchasing for the current salt truck. Also, speaking of the brakes, I know this gets into the weeds a little bit, and it's only exciting to myself and a few other people in the room. But our current truck has hydraulic brakes. Those are steel. The corrosive nature of salt, when that line gets broken, that truck is in the shop for an extended period of time. You have to bleed the lines, you have to fabricate, reassemble, make sure it's not leaking at all, and then refill the lines. Talking to Chuck today, that just takes a lot of time, effort, and energy. The new truck is all plastic, rubber, an eight-dollar part, well, most of the time, fix that if there's a leak. You don't have to bleed the lines. It's all isolated. What I would like to do with the current truck is not to get rid of it. I would like to use it on an as-needed basis for asphalt. I do not want to put asphalt into a brand-new truck bed and use that in that way. After talking to Chuck and Keith, we feel like that's the best plan. We think we can still get some value out of it. It's just using it on a daily basis in the cold weather is not practical anymore. And keeping it up to the standard of where we would need to have it to be used for that reason is not, is not cost-effective any longer. It's twenty-one years old. It's served us well. But I want to use it in a different fashion and purchase a new truck in its place. And that's why I would be proposing us to purchase a new dump truck slash salt truck at the next meeting.
Okay. No, you want to wait. Why do you want to wait? Makes sense to me. Why are we waiting?
You got to approve it.
We have to approve it, so why can't we approve it tonight?
Because of the purchase amount, we wanted to give the board enough time to look at the quotes, too.
What's the purchase about?
The purchase amount on this truck is ninety-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars.
Yeah, if we, over twenty-one years, that's a pretty good, pretty good run. I'd like to make a motion that we approve purchase of this truck. Like a second. And then we can discuss it.
Second.
Okay, now what?
What fund are you proposing to purchase it out of?
I know George and I had talked about it.
We had budget in your general fund.
It's already in there.
We've already budgeted. We've planned for it during the budget.
Why not the permanent improvement fund?
Because we're going to have a bunch of other stuff that's going to be coming from that fund this year.
It's an option. Just when we did the budget, we.
Again, for me, it's just, it's a permanent improvement, so it would come from the permanent improvement fund. So what's the argument for the general fund? Just that you've already used up, or you're already planning on using up the permanent improvement fund?
No, we were just looking where money was available. At the time when we were doing the budget, we moved funds around to account for it, but we could also use the PI fund as well, if it doesn't have it tied up to certain projects.
But understand, we have some serious needs in our elementary buildings. For instance, Chapman, very shortly, we're going to be grabbing mechanical contractors up there. We've got some problem with HVAC over at Chapman. So we need to retrofit out there. Just be careful on where you take money from where, so that we can make sure that we have enough. I really don't, to me, it doesn't matter where you take the money out of, as long as we understand that after twenty-one years, and I had an opportunity to go with Keith and Steve down, I mean, that old, the old dump truck was a disaster. It was, somebody was going to get hurt in that thing.
The black one?
Yeah.
That's since been auctioned off and we.
Agreed, but that thing was a death trap. And it's a shame that we haven't paid attention to this issue in the past, but now we're trying to rectify that. And I agree with you, don't put asphalt in a brand-new salt truck. You know, you can always hose off dirt and everything else. I think it's a perfect plan. However, you guys want to manage the dollar amount?
It seems to me that it's a permanent improvement. It's ninety-nine thousand dollars coming out of the operating fund. I don't think that's the right place for it to come out of. So I would think it would come out of the permanent improvement fund. It's a capital improvement. The one thing I caution on keeping, the other one that we're going to use for asphalt, is that with its limited use and you use it, be cognizant of not to put too much maintenance money into it, because sometimes you keep this old equipment around, and all it does is suck up funds and energy, and you end up putting a bunch of time and money into a piece of equipment that gets used very infrequently, when you can just get rid of it and rent, or lease, or do something, when you need to use a piece of equipment, right? So just, just be cognizant of what, you know, the first time you have to put some money into that thing, think about it. And then, but you will, because you're a smart guy and you're all over this stuff, so we're going to tell you to do your job. Just be careful of that.
So those were my two, my two follow-up questions were, did we consider leasing? And is there a benefit to leasing it, the new unit? And B, the similar comment with the old unit? If, I'm assuming the idea is to keep it until it's not worth repairing anymore? At which case, at which point, I'm concerned that we're going to have an albatross, which maybe we may be able to get by selling it now, perhaps we get more money from an operating vehicle than trying to get rid of junk. So as long as you've weighed those options, I'm comfortable.
We have. We looked at what it would be to scrap it. To be honest, it's of value now for us, but if we find it's starting to cost too much to maintain.
And I'm not a fan of leasing, because all you're going to do is pay interest, right? You're just going, someone's going to make a little bit of profit on the same piece of equipment that we want to keep for twenty-one years, right? So there's no point to that.
I had that same thought. In conversations I had with Joe Walker from the city, we discussed the pros and cons and how the city approaches it. And they've always leaned towards purchasing for those reasons, that reason of leasing, so. It was discussed. It was weighed, and this is the best, best possible option I can give you.
The only comment I have is, it's a salt truck. And last time I looked outside, there's no urgency for a salt truck, so I'm comfortable waiting till the next meeting.
You don't know when nature's going to hit.
Or someone could buy it.
Are they going to show up? Is it going to show up tomorrow, if we buy it tomorrow?
It would show up within the next few days, because we have it back at Valley Ford right now. And the issues that we found with it, which were very minor, they're fixing right now, before they give it to us.
Is time of the essence, in your opinion?
Always.
Is there competition for this truck, in other words?
I don't want it to get sold off from underneath us, is an issue.
Hang on one second. Is time of the essence?
I had a question, too. Is this truck stored in a garage or outside? Where do we keep this truck?
It's been in the garage.
Will the new truck fit in our current garages? I only say that because like, my neighbor had a fifteen-passenger van, and then he realized it doesn't fit in his garage, so he couldn't get in his garage.
He could sell us a fifteen-passenger van.
Exactly. He's got a lot of kids.
They do have a lot of children.
Well, I'm comfortable. I know we, I've heard about the truck before. This isn't the first time we're hearing about the truck, so I'm comfortable with the vote.
Well, are we deciding where the funds are coming from?
Permanent improvement, yeah.
Yes.
We're deciding. So then, what money are you not going, you're going to have now a hundred thousand dollars available in your general fund budget. What happens with that? Just becomes carryover for next year, or are you going to find other uses for it?
One, we have, I have to make sure there's enough funds available in the PI that it hasn't been encumbered on other projects. Because after the, there's a million dollars in the PI fund, so after the debt payments and the buses that we purchased, so that cuts that almost more than half, so that leaves it.
I'm comfortable with you putting it wherever it fits best. Okay, it should be, as long as it goes as a capital asset on our books, I'd prefer it come out of the PI. If there's room, if there's not room, then this is the truck that we need. It's going to, it's cash.
And I'm with George. If we need to fix Chapman HVAC problems, it can get expensive quick. And so wherever George thinks the best ought to come, that's where we ought to take it.
Mr. Neso, just as a procedural.
So the motion, go ahead.
So I think we need two motions. One, put it on, which I think we've all agreed to. But just a procedural, one to vote that it's coming on to the agenda, and then another to vote for the actual item.
And so move to place the purchase of the new salt truck for the amount of?
Ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Onto the agenda.
Are you sure that's the max that's going to be, Steve?
Yeah, that's the quote that they've given me.
Any further discussion? I'm putting it on the agenda.
It's got to be everything out the door, because if it's more, we can't spend more.
Would you want to make it for a hundred?
No, because he's going back to the woman in Strongsville and saying that's all.
Yeah, we would, I would hold him to this quote.
I'm not asking you guys to walk into the bus garages by yourselves and trip over something, but those guys down there, they know what they're doing. I mean, for them to keep that, those two dump trucks alive for this many years, was just amazing. I mean, I saw them tearing trainees out and everything else. They just, they know what they're doing down there.
If you're certain that ninety-nine?
The quote I have says, cost complete ninety-nine nine six five, and that's what I would hold her to.
All right, so this vote is just to put it on the agenda, so Mr. Groves in motion, Colonel Evans second. So, Mr. Neso, you came with the pursuit of the vote?
I had a motion on the floor to buy the thing now, so you've got to switch those around.
So Colonel Evans made the motion, George. Mr. Groves in second.
No, actually, I made a motion to buy it, and Richard seconded it. So this is a motion after that motion.
So we're vacating that motion? Is that what we're doing?
I, I said to put it on the agenda, and then you already got your motion in second to purchase it.
That's right.
But we have to do those as two separate votes.
Right, well, two separate votes. First one is to put it on the agenda. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, everyone, next vote is to vote to purchase the truck. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you. Next item.
Good job, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all the hard work down there.
Thank you.
All right. I'm just thinking about what I could put on the agenda. All right, next up is Eric Green, Director of Curriculum, with our curriculum report for this month.
Good evening. I have seven items for you tonight for consideration. I know, it's a big night. The first two are service agreements with McKean Education Group, and this is pass-through portion of our Title I funds. First one is for part-time Title I instructors for St. Joseph and John. The second one is for a part-time title instructor for Holy Family School. Items three and four are overnight trips for the high school hockey team. Item three is to travel to a preseason scrimmage in Oxford, Ohio. And item four is travel to Columbus for a classic hockey tournament, Thanksgiving Classic, Thursday, November twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. We have an out-of-state trip for the girls' varsity basketball team, wishing to travel to Tampa, Florida, December twenty-seventh through January first. Expenses are paid by participating students and fundraising. And number six, we have a student-teacher methods field placement from Baldwin Wallace, looking to be placed at the middle school. Number seven, we have two student-teacher placements, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and those are both from Baldwin Wallace as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. We have no report for student services this month. So next up is Jenny Pelco, Assistant Superintendent with the Human Resource Report.
Thank you, Mr. I have a good evening. Under human resources, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have the resignation of certificated staff. Under E2, the appointment of a certificated staff member, followed by appointments for non-certificated staff, and appointments for certificated substitutes. And following under E2, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, one appointment for a certificated supplemental contract paid upon completion, and appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion, and non-certificated supplemental contracts that are prorated. Under E3, we have several changes in status for non-certificated staff. Under E4, one educational incentive upgrade for one of our administrators. And continuing under E4, salary upgrades for certificated staff members. Under E5, we have one continuing contract recommendation for non-certificated staff. Under E6, we have stipends for, from our student services department. These are for certificated and non-certificated, for training, for placement and help within our autism spectrum classrooms. And under E7, we have one disability leave on non-certificated staff. Under E8, one non-certificated unpaid medical leave. Under E9, certificated medical leaves and non-certificated medical leaves. And under E10, volunteers for our winter indoor track program and volunteer chaperones. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
I do have a couple of questions. There's two coaches in here. Let me get back to where we were. There's a basketball coach and a football coach. Was, were the varsity head coaches aware of these selections, and did they approve of them?
Yes.
That was my only question. Yep, those are my only questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have no technology report, and with that, that ends my superintendent's report this month.
All right, that brings us to the report on Polaris. Richard?
Thank you, Carl. I just want to extend congratulations to Chef O or Chef Olcheski. He was recently honored with his ninth straight Ohio Pro Start Teacher of Distinction Award. It pays tribute to engaged culinary educators who are dedicated to their students and enhancing the image of the culinary programs. And in addition to Chef O's honor, the program itself was honored with its fifth Ohio Pro Start School of Distinction Award. The, it recognizes schools that meet the benchmarks of the program. Pro Start is the industry education program, so the fact that we continue to earn these distinctions attests to the vitality and the importance of the program. We all know that the culinary team won the national back-to-back last year. This is just another certification that they're doing great work there, and that if you are a student in that program, you're getting good skills that are going to make you career-ready. I do want to highlight a few of the Veterans Day activities that Polaris has planned for any of our veterans in the audience. Let's see, Polaris, veterans and active-duty service members are invited to Polaris Wednesday, November eighth, through Friday, November tenth, to take part in the following. There's going to be free lunch in the Old Oak Cafe from eleven-thirty to one, free services at the New Beginning Salon from eleven-twenty to two, so that can be your nails, your hair. Uh, free services at the New Beginning Salon from eleven-twenty to two, so that can be, uh, your nails, your hair, your eyebrows, whatever, uh, a veteran might need. And then, uh, and then there'll, there'll also be free bakery items, uh, at the Monde Lees Bakery from twelve-fifteen to two-fifteen. But all of these things are just to, uh, say thank you to our veterans, uh, whether, uh, retired or active duty. So, um, it's a great program, and I think it, uh, it means a lot to the students, uh, to have that opportunity.
And Richard, on behalf of all veterans, I would like to say thank you to Polaris for that effort. That's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Duke. I'll pass it on. And then the last one, uh, very important and timely, is the, uh, holiday bake sale is gearing up. Uh, every year, uh, Polaris does a, uh, program with the, uh, Bakery and Pastry Art, through the Bakery and Pastry Arts Program. Now's the time to place your orders. Uh, they're due by November tenth. Uh, pickup would be Tuesday, November twenty-first. And they have everything from Dutch apple pie, pumpkin pie, peanut butter pie, banana bread, uh, bread pudding with bourbon sauce. So lots of good stuff. If you go to the website, right on the homepage is a link at the top to get the order form and place your orders. And I suggest doing that, uh, early, because, uh, once the deadline hits, they, they order the ingredients and they start baking. And that completes my, uh, report on Polaris.
Legislative?
Legislative, I just have one update. Um, the Senate Education Committee, uh, is reviewing HB one-seventy. And HB one-seventy addresses particularly, uh, computer science education. When it, if and when it is passed, it will, uh, like everything else, uh, add to our requirements, um, and add computer science, whether it's programming, whether it's analytics or whatever, to the requirements to graduate. Um, and it also adds some requirements for our teachers to teach those classes. So we'll continue to follow that and.
But no money, right?
Fully funded, of course.
Again, uh, you know, it is Christmas, we're getting to the Christmas season, but Santa Claus hasn't arrived yet. So we'll continue to follow that, and we'll, uh, update the community as it's warranted. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Now, that brings us to the Board Liaison Reports. City Council, is that Jane or?
Yes.
Jane.
Yes, it was a very lengthy city council meeting. Um, they held, um, two public hearings concerning zoning, um, in the city. One is a plot on Pearl Road across from Boston Market. There's a, an empty, um, piece of land. So they had a public hearing discussing the rezoning of that. And then they had another, um, public hearing discussing rezoning of the Medical Mutual Building, which is the building across from the mall, and Applebee's there where the light is. So, um, that, um, if, the city council will be voting on those rezonings at their next meeting. So if anyone has an opinion, I urge you to reach out to your city council people and let your opinion be known. And other than that, it was, um, an uneventful meeting.
Other than that. Um, do you wanna go to PTA?
I don't, George, did you cover PTA? Did you wanna?
I did. Um, PTA, um, had the rocking at the rec two Fridays ago. Um, the council meeting was actually the first Thursday. We listened to Cameron for a little while as well. Uh, it was on the fifth. Um, and really just waiting for the next one. Uh, PTA, PTA is busy, um, doing a lot of things around the, um, district. Um, and I forgot the calendars that they provided to me with.
Yeah, there, there's not a lot going on, other than, um, if you're a teacher in the district and you want a grant, the grant deadline is November tenth. So make sure you contact your PTA and your principal to get those pre-approved, so that you can take advantage of, uh, the money that PTA is going to be donating to the district this year.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. Student achievement?
I am going to wait till after our illustrious day off tomorrow, or our early release day, to see what we can, um, generate in the way of, uh, language arts. So I hope to focus on language arts next, um, meeting and have some good examples of what our progress is, so.
Excellent. Um, I did, on student achievement, I did go to the, uh, or, to the orchestra concert last night, and it was outstanding as usual. It was amazing. It's, it's, it's just a great group, so. Um, with that, we'll move on to the Board Committee Reports. There's no Finance Committee Report. Uh, Policy, we've got a couple of policies coming up later. Uh, anything else to discuss on there? Facilities Committee?
Um, our next meeting is next Thursday. Um, it is six-thirty here at the Admin Building. Um, it is a Board Committee, so visitors are welcome.
And encouraged.
And encouraged to come, absolutely.
Alright, that brings us to the Consent Calendar. Um, all items with an asterisk are approved in a single vote, uh, unless excluded, and, uh, can I have a, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion items or, alright, uh, let's, uh, let's vote. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso? Yes. Mr. Groves in?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent. That brings us to Board Policy. We have several policies, two policies actually, that are up for their third reading. I would like to recommend that each policy be voted on separately. Um, I'd like to, uh, so we'll begin with the Field and Other District Sponsored Trips. Um, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion, I think we've got some discussion on this item.
Oh, yes, we do.
And we'd like to start?
Uh, I will.
Okay.
Um, I think this policy needs to be rewritten. I feel very strongly that the Board, the way it's written right now, the Board has only one opportunity to approve or disapprove a overseas trip. I don't think that's sufficient, given the situation, the world situation, how, how fragile and changeable it is, and given my thirty-plus years of experience overseas. I think the Board has the, uh, been trusted by the parents of the, of the district for the safety and well-being of not only their, the kids, but the staff as well. And that I will not, for one, want to entrust the decision-making to a travel company as to whether our kids should go overseas into a questionable area. And I understand that the State Department, um, issues travel advisories, travel watches, and travel warnings, but that doesn't always represent the situation in the world, as evidenced last year by the French, uh, Baraklon massacre and the follow-on at the deli several weeks later. Uh, places that we always felt were safe to go in Europe are not always safe. And it doesn't mean that we would say no to a trip that we previously approved, but I think there needs to be checkpoints along the way that the Board could review the decision and say yes or no, we still concur, or no, there's, things have changed, and we need to at least look into it, if not, disapprove it at that point. So, uh, my intention would be to vote no on this, uh, as it stands. I would request that it be rewritten to encompass some decision points for the Board members to be able to review and either concur with what's going forward, or review and possibly disapprove going forward at that point.
Thank you, Duke. Anyone else have any?
Mr. Neso, just, just as a reference, I, and so we all are looking at the same thing I put up there. This is the paragraph that was added to the Board Policy. So it's just a reference point for the Board, uh, as to what exactly it was stated.
I mean, I have the, I, I concur with, with Duke. Um, I think, you know, I looked at the, I looked at the policy. I looked at the contract as provided by the travel agents who were here, uh, when they presented this, uh, several months ago to us. And there are certain, um, checkpoint, there's certain contractual penalties that increase as you get closer to the trip. There's one at a hundred and fifty days, there's one at a hundred and ten days, and there's another one at thirty days. And also in that, um, when they made their, their presentation, they said that, you know, that we could trust them, because they had, they had increased knowledge of the security situation. That's what they do. So what I would propose is that, what I would like to see in this policy, is that we would get an update from them, whatever board meeting preceded the one-fifty, whatever board meeting preceded the one-ten, whatever board meeting preceded the thirty. So the, the Board could make, i- if, if there's no change in the security situation, and, and I would define the security situation, you know, I took a little time, and I, I would define that security situation to be, you know, if there's an increase in the State Department's level, if it goes from clear to alert, that's an, that's, that's something that we should address. If it goes from alert to warning, that's already actually in there, that once there's a warning, uh, we've, you know, the, the trip is under serious consideration for cancellation. If there's a significant change in the political climate, um, at the destination, if there's terrorist activity or renewed threat of terrorist activity, if there's actions by the US government. Recently, um, the US, um, pulled all its diplomats out of, out of Cuba and sent theirs back. That happened before the alert on the, you know, I don't know how the timing is with the State Department, but an action like that could, could show that we have a problem, and, and there's, it, there's reasons why there's a stepped increase in the contract penalties, and I think if we time our, so what I would propose is that we'd get a review prior to those dates, so that the Board could, could, if nothing changes, there's no decision. We just get an update, there's no process. If, if we get an update and it says, well, it went from clear to now there's an alert, maybe we, maybe at that point, we could consider making a vote. Now, I realize that at a hundred and fifty days, when you get to a hundred and forty-nine days, the penalty goes from ninety-five dollars to three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Well, that's just, that's the world we live in today. So, I, I, it would be unfortunate, but I, I'd rather have that situation than, than what, what could happen. And I'm completely uncomfortable with the way the current policy is written, where we delegate that authority, that decision-making process to the travel agent at this point, because they're financially incentivized for the trip to go to completion. So they've got a conflict of in, interest. They, why, if they cancel the trip, they lose money. If it goes on and they get by and it's okay, you know, then, then they make their, their money. And I just, I'm not comfortable delegating. If I have to vote on the front end to approve this trip, then I want security updates. And all we're looking for is due diligence here. All we're looking for is security and, and, and some kind of, you know, some kind of process that allows the Board to intervene when we have to. It has to be clear to the parents and the participants that this could happen. And, you know, we've got a set criteria. It's not just, you know, we just don't feel comfortable with the trip anymore. Something happened. And there's defined points in the policy that say what happened a- and, and what goes there. And so that's, I, I'm all with Duke on this one. Um, you know, I think, um, you know, we, we're coming at it from a couple of different angles, but I think we're there. I think at the same time, we need to push, uh, you know, when the travel agent made their presentation, you know, I asked them, you know, that they were gonna have to evolve if they wanted to survive. Um, and I, I still think that's true. I, I think these travel companies, if they don't evolve and they stick with these harsh penalties, they're gonna find themselves like Blockbuster and pre-printed forms, and they're gonna be looking for something to do. Uh, because I don't think you're gonna be able to survive in this industry, and so I think you, you'd have to go out and look and do an RFP or whatever the process is to see, pressure them to reduce their penalties, so that there isn't such a burden on our parents. But at the same time, I, I'm not comfortable with, without having some kind of further review as we go down there. Uh, and the decision's not gonna be left to a travel agency. We all got elected to make hard decisions and to put our name on, to sign our name to these decisions, and there's no way to delegate it or pass it off. So, I mean, that, that's where I stand. Um. So with that, if there are any other, Richard or Jane or anybody else have any comments? George?
I, I, I feel like I'm the, um, the person in the middle here, and let me kind of explain. I don't like any government agency. I don't care if it's city, county, state, or federal coming into my house and allow, or s, come to me and say, I'm gonna make a decision for your family or for your child. I truly believe that ultimately the responsibility of making a decision for a child to go out of this country, with the group or not with the group, lays in the parent's hands. They have to make that decision. This has been a burden, this question's been a burden, this policy's been a burden on me. And so the past few days, I've asked a number of people, and especially my best friend, when she was my wife. And we've had this discussion now for well over forty-eight hours, and it's just grinded me like crazy. Because ultimately, if something happens to our children or to that group, even, and I've asked for, um, I've asked, and it's in the policy currently, or will be added to the policy, that in two weeks prior to leaving on the trip, that the parent sign a document. The parent signs a document and says, here's the current picture of the world format of where we're going. They are accepting responsibility of sending that child. They are doing this with open arm, with open eyes. Um, I don't know. I, I, I have waffled back and forth on this one, um, like you haven't believed. So, I'd like to hear what Jane and Richard have to say, but I don't know, at this point.
I'll say one thing. The policy as written does not contain your request for two-week notification.
Agreed.
So that needs to be rewritten regardless.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not, I'm not.
So I don't know how in good conscience you could approve this.
And, and I'm not gonna, we can't make a decision on sending a child six months, five months, before we're supposed to send them to foreign country, and then take our hands off the wheel. My opinion is two weeks prior to them leaving, you allow that parent to make that decision by allowing them to be notified. Here is what the State Department has, or said, here's how many alerts they've had. It is your decision, it is your money, to send your child or not to send your child. Um, the responsibility of that decision has to fall with the parent, ultimately. But as a Board Member, my name's on the decision to either let them go or not go.
And that's why I wanted.
And that's hard part for me.
Yeah, that's why I wanted them at these various increments, because letting them know before the financial penalty ratchets up. So, I mean, if you wait till the two weeks before, which I agree a hundred percent with that letter, I, I think that's exactly spot-on, that comment, that, that idea. But if you wait too far down the tree, then the penalty at that point is the ninety-five non-refundable plus fifty percent of all non, non-returnable deposits. So you got a pretty significant, uh, a, a much more significant hit at that point. That's why I'd like these updates at these increments that would allow us, allow the trip to be canceled.
What does, what does one of these trips cost? Just?
I don't know. Honestly, it's gotta be about.
It varies?
Fifteen hundred dollars. I, it's gotta be in that range, right?
Yeah, it, I mean, it can vary depending on the location of where they're going, how many people are going. Um, but it can be anywhere from a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. Depends.
Alright.
Okay.
So I was just gonna give a little background on the Policy Committee and, and some history. This came to, came back to the Policy Committee because we had the issue before. And, uh, the, during that issue, the Board felt it was unwise to travel. Uh, we canceled the trip, and we dealt with a lot of, uh, parents and children who wanted to go on that trip. And we felt it was unsafe, and we made the decision to cancel the trip, and we made the decision to refund to those parents the money that they would have lost. And at that time, I said, you know, that's the best decision because of that. But going forward, we're not in a position to refund parents' money, um, for trips. So we brought back the policy to the Policy Committee, and we discussed it. And the thing that we talked about was nobody wants to send children to an unsafe place. But the, the policy was that the time for that decision is at the forefront. It's the Board of Education's job to determine, is this trip worthwhile? Does this trip have educational merit and value? Some that the Board can say, yes, the teachers can plan this, yes, the administration can set up the guidelines, and yes, we can offer this as an opportunity. It is important for me to remember, this is not required, this is not, uh, essential, not everyone goes on these trips. But I think there's enough merit, especially in the, uh, World Language Department, the idea of learning a different language and then going and immersing yourself in that culture and in that experience. We all know you go to Europe and everybody speaks English. Um, but it is a, it is a different experience. It is educational. I think there's merit to it. So then we come to, how do we determine what to do if, uh, world, world events intercede? And that's where I went to the Travel Department, and their, their definitions, the travel warnings. We issue a travel warning when we want you to consider very carefully whether you should go to a country at all. And that's why the policy was, if the State Department has an existing travel warning, it's automatically canceled. And I think that's reasonable, and I think parents looking at it would understand that, and I think the Board and the administration understands that. Then we come to a travel alert. We issue a travel alert for short-term events we think you should know about when planning travel to a country. Example of reasons for issuing a travel alert might include an election season that is bound to have many strikes, demonstrations, or disturbances. A health alert, like an outbreak of H-one-N-one, or evidence of an elevated risk of terrorist attacks. When these short-term events. When these short-term events are over, we cancel the travel alert. And I can understand Duke's concern. I think terrorism, I think violence, any of those situations are the ones we're concerned about. That's the world we live in. And we were clear in the policy that the time for parents to make all of those considerations was when they were giving... When they were choosing whether to go on a trip, whether to send their child on this trip, the time to know the consequences as far as money you lose, the time to know that if a warning occurs, the trip is automatically canceled. If an alert occurs, the tour company has the wherewithal to modify the trip. And I think we're all cynical, and I understand the idea of profit motive. I also think it's overly cynical to think that a travel company is going to disregard imminent threat of terror and say, "Well, we're going anyways 'cause we gotta get that money." They know that their business long-term is dependent on having happy experiences. And to risk that risks their business. So, and we pick the people that we pick to make sure that they're ethical, to make sure that they have those kinds of things in mind. So I was comfortable saying, "Warning is no-go automatically." And alerts, the travel company reserves the right to modify. For example, if, and I talked about this previously, if a strike's occurring and the museum isn't gonna be open, well, you're not gonna cancel the trip, but you're gonna stop... You're not gonna go to that museum. And the travel company will say, "Instead of going to this museum, we're gonna do some other worthwhile activity." International travel, you know, you have to be aware of that. The travel company informs the participants. And I think it's much more elegant and more straightforward to make sure that we do the right job informing parents ahead of time what their risks are and what their responsibilities are. And then based on that, they can make an informed decision.
And how are we supposed to know that if we have no points where the board revisits this trip?
Well, again, we're proposing that in the guidelines that Cameron develops, all of that stuff is there. There's nothing to prevent... There's nothing to prevent Cameron bringing us all the information we want.
Where does it say that in the policy, Richard?
We can add that. If that's what makes you comfortable, we can add that.
No, I am not comfortable with the travel agency making decisions for our kids, period. They can recommend stuff. If there is an alert, they can come and propose it. Here's what we're gonna do if all of us feel like that makes sense. Yeah, that's good. Hands off, we're fine with it. If it's not good enough, we need to have the right to go back and say, "No, you need to do more."
And again, that to me is where I disagree. And I understand your point of view, Duke. I just disagree and say the time for us to do that is ahead of time. And if we wanna make as many structures as we want in the policy, that's fine. But I don't wanna be in a position as a board evaluating an alert and trying to say, "Is this alert, it's H1N1? Should we send the kids or not?" That's where the parents have been informed ahead of time. They've been given options to purchase insurance. They've been given options, and they know that we live in a dangerous world. If they feel it's important and worth the risk, they're no different than if you and I travel.
The parents always have the right to say... I don't disagree with George at all, because I think he's right. The parents are ultimately responsible for their own child. But under the auspices of the board and the district, we are approving a trip. And what I'm saying to you is if they come to us in September, October and say, "Okay, here's a trip to Europe, go ahead and approve it." And we would normally, we would say, "Yeah, it's fine, go ahead." And then by February or March, there's something that occurs over there or something that's brewing that we look at and say, "You know what? We really need to reconsider this." And call the responsible party in the travel company or whatever else and ask them and work with them and work with Cameron to say, "This makes sense or not makes sense." But the way the policy's written right now, we don't have that option.
Correct.
And that's what I'm saying. We need to have that option. We need to have the checkpoints that Carl talked about to take a look at it and say... You know, if Cameron comes in and says, "It's 125 days before this trip to France or whatever. Everything's cool." Then we just shake our heads and say, "The original approval stands." Thank you for the update.
So at what point is that cutoff? Is it two hours before the flight that we can cancel this trip? Or is it the day before? I mean, how fast do you want the board reaction to be?
Well, we've got three checkpoints in here.
I know, but something could happen.
It could, and we could stop the trip. It could be tomorrow, and we'll say, "Listen, this trip is off." I mean, there could be, you know, there could be, you know, 12... This trip could be to go into France. And there could have been seven consecutive days of terrorist attacks. And our...
But the State Department would've taken care of that then.
Maybe, I don't know. I'm not delegating this to the State Department. I'm not delegating this to the travel company. I'm gonna rely on the State Department. But if they haven't changed their alert, and there's been seven days, 'cause they say, "Well, it was... They promised seven attacks. They've had seven attacks. It's over, and our plane's coming in on day eight." You know, all I want is these... You know, unfortunately terrorists don't play by Robert's Rules or Marcus of Queensberry Rules. They only play by MNA Rules. So, you know, I just want the flexibility to... I just want a security update. And then chances are, we're not gonna, you know, if it's a flu outbreak, you know, we'll determine the zone, the areas we're in.
Why don't we have the same theory then with our local trips, our trips within the United States for the trips to New York and the trips to Florida? I mean, if... Why are we just... Terrorism, as we've witnessed unfortunately, happens here as well. So I don't know why you're making that distinction that it's only gonna happen outside of the United States.
The degree of risk is much higher with an international trip than it would be domestically, generally speaking. The timeframes are much shorter from the time we approve it to the time the kids go on a domestic trip. And I've dealt with the State Department, Jane. I can tell you from personal experience. I mean, you want a real-world example? Look how long it took the State Department to put North Korea off-bounds to Americans and issue a travel warning. And we've had dead kids coming back from North Korea, you know? I mean, warm beer. The State Department is slow. It's a big bureaucracy. It is slow to respond.
There's been a travel warning for North Korea for a long time.
We did not prohibit Americans from going there. Now we do.
Okay.
So that changed. But I'm saying the State Department's a great organization, but they're very slow to respond in some cases. And so I just... All we're saying, all I'm saying is I want these checkpoints to be able to look at this and intervene as a board if necessary at a point. Not because we're going to do it, but I want the option in the policy to do it. That's all I'm asking for.
And only for international trips?
Well, I mean, yeah. I mean, I don't disagree with Jane. If you wanna put checkpoints in for domestic trips too, it's fine with me. I think the need is less.
I think that puts Cameron in a difficult spot, and I think that puts the district in a difficult spot. 'Cause I think the policy ultimately comes back to the board having go/no-go authority at any time.
And we do. And we do.
And we should.
And we have to.
You know?
Well, if I can interject for a second.
Thank you.
I think there's a couple of things that I'd just like to share from my experience. You know, I was on the Policy Committee, and so I supported the policy as it's written here. And I'm always willing to look at it and see, can we enhance it? Can we make it better? Are there things that we missed? You know, what... I was the one that went and met with all the parents when we canceled the trip. And yes, we all heard emails, but I met and talked with a lot of them on the phone. And the one constant comment I got is, "It's my right as a parent to determine whether it's safe or not for my child to go on this trip."
Let them take their kid to France.
And I understand that...
Just not on my watch.
I understand that when we approve a trip, we take on responsibility for the safety of all kids. And I have that same dilemma. I hate homecoming weekend. I hate prom weekend. I hate when kids go travel to Tampa, to New York, because anytime they leave Strongsville, it increases the risk for anything to happen. And it's stressful for all of us involved, 'cause we want our kids to be safe. But our parents, I could say, that were going on the international trip felt strongly that it was their right as a parent to determine the safety of that trip and that we should not, as a school district or a board, taking that away from them. Now, I support the decision. I made the recommendation. But I do think we're in a different spot. So what I look at and why I support this policy, or a variation of it, is the fact that I in no way, through no future work, am gonna have an expertise to determine whether international travel is applicable or not for our kids. I have to, whether we say delegate or advocate, I've gotta rely on experts in the field that do this as a daily operation. EF Tours, which is the group that we use, are not just a local tour group. They're a national tour group. They're recognized and approved by our State Superintendent's Association as their preferred tour group. They do this. They have people in the countries where we're going. I have to have a level of trust that we picked a tour company that's gonna have the best interests of our students at heart. Yes, they're there to make a profit. They're a business. But at the same time, that they're gonna take our student's safety and, you know, for the Paris trip. Maybe they would still go to Paris, but they wouldn't go to certain locations that had increased safety risks. And so those are the things that I have to look at. And the question that I'm going to get, let's just propose out there that we set... First of all, let me be clear. I don't have any problem with updates at certain benchmarks of where we're at, and let's have a formal discussion as a board. The question that the teachers are going to ask me... So let's say we do that, and we say the board has the ability to, at any of those checkpoints, say go/no-go. The question that the teachers are gonna ask me before they spend countless hours and dollars to plan this trip is, "Where do you think the board is at? For what are reasons that they're going to say yes or no?" I struggle with, because I know we've talked about big-picture ideas, but I don't have anything concrete to share as to what that would look like, what that would sound like, what that would be. And although I haven't had this conversation with the teachers, my concern is that the risk versus the reward to do all the planning, traveling, and then the board still has the right to cancel within the last hours, that international travel would not happen for that fact. Because I don't think anybody wants to go through what we went through last year. So I know that there's a lot to think about. I take the safety of our kids seriously. It's the most important thing that we do. And sometimes I have to entrust the safety of our students to the recommendations and feedback. And I don't feel in the area of international travel, I'm an expert. I know other members on the board have had different experiences that have more expertise in that area than I do.
Do you feel you made the right decision last time when we canceled the trip?
I feel I made the right... We made the right decision last time.
Then all we're asking for is to put that exact same process into this policy.
But I don't feel the circumstances are the same. The trip was approved by another superintendent. No discredit to Mr. Kupinski, but I was not the superintendent when that trip was approved. I was not aware of the details of how that was communicated and planned. And so at that time, I felt that we needed to have clear procedures as to what would go on, that the parents understood their role in approving the trip. We understood our role. And I feel that this policy does, that it clearly draws a line that says, "We approved the tour company. We approved the educational value of the trip. Other than that, parents, guardians, you are responsible for everything past that point." We have to remember, in other districts, in other districts I worked at and previously in Strongsville, these trips were not board-approved. They were summer trips. They were spring break trips that were not school district-approved. And, "Hey, we're gonna go to Germany, and it happens my teacher's gonna go, and we're gonna go on this small trip." So I'm not saying we go to that.
I like that idea.
But I all... But, you know, those are some of the things that, you know, I don't know for sure. I just think it's something to think about.
Well, if you wanna go to a situation where there are not district-approved or endorsed trips, fine, then we can take this policy out. But if you're gonna have this policy and we are going to approve trips, then I feel it is incumbent upon us to not abdicate that responsibility to periodically review, as reasonable schedule as Carl's outlined, what the situation is. Has it changed? Are there any overt risks to our students or staff? And if there's nothing going on, then fine, we say, "Go ahead." If there is something going on, then it requires further review. And that just means we touch base. Because I don't think it's right to approve a trip in September that's going next May, and then we have no other opportunity between September and May for us to look at it and say, "Has the world situation changed?"
And I don't disagree with you, Colonel. I just don't know as a... And this is more clear. I don't know as a local board or as a superintendent, besides what I can read on the State Department's website, how I could get valuable information to make that decision.
We can go out and get it. We can go out and get it. We can get feedback from the trip people. We can get it from the State Department and other sources.
And I wanna just add one thing. Jane, you had made a comment, you know, what's the difference between domestic and foreign trips? When you're a US citizen and you're barely speaking the language and you're in a group of 20, 30, you stick out like a sore thumb. And so it's... There's obviously a difference between going to Tampa, going to California, and then going to Europe. I mean, but it's still... It's still a parent's responsibility.
George, would you be willing to discuss the additions to the policy that you would want? Do you have them?
Yeah. I can look it up in my email.
And Cameron, if you can bring up the portion that's... The superintendent will develop guidelines, and then it's lettered.
In here?
Mm-hmm. There we go. So the proposal is below that. Can just keep going up. So in addition to A through I...
So J, and this is what Richard put together. For international travel and travel out of state, parents or legal guardians will be required to sign a disclosure statement acknowledging that they are aware of the risks and responsibilities associated with the cost of the trip and the consequences for a trip cancellation by the parent, the travel company, or sponsor, and the Board of Education. K would be, two weeks prior to the departure of international travel, parents will receive information and an information update on the travel destination and will require a sign... Required to sign a disclosure statement acknowledging the information. Then L, if prior to the departure, the US State Department issues a travel warning for the destination, the trip is immediately canceled by the Board of Education. If a travel alert is issued, the itinerary may be adjusted by the travel company or sponsor. So that was just the rough draft that Richard sent me today.
Excellent. And then M? M would be at the various intervals at 150, 110, and 30. Updates will be provided to the board, security updates. And at that point, the board, at their discretion, can take action on the trip. And once we put those in there, I'm good with the policy.
Me too.
So Mr. Neso, just procedurally, George, do you want us to walk us through how we need to address the current policy that's up for board consideration and then take into consideration the other discussion items that have just been presented?
Yeah, so we can do a few things. One, we could make a motion... Someone could make a motion to add the items that Mr. Grozen just stated and Mr. Neso stated, to add them to the policy. Then someone makes a second. And if those two actions are completed, then we vote on just a vote to add those to the policy. Then if that vote is passes, then we would vote on the policy as revised. If that vote is voted no, then we would vote on the original policy. Or we could vote on the current policy, see where it stands. If it passes, if it is voted... If it's voted down, then we could take it back to the committee to revise it. Or we can vote to table it.
Well, in my two cents, let's have a vote on the policy that's currently on the screen. Because then you're gonna find out exactly where you stand with that current policy.
It won't pass.
Exactly.
So then the next option is to vote on whether we put the... Include your comments and my comments into the policy.
Which I'm fine with. No, if we vote on the... If we vote on the current policy, then it's voted no, then we... Or not voted no, but if it's...
I would suggest to clean it up, we just table it and come back to it.
I agree.
That's probably the cleanest.
Yeah.
Just table it and come back to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I will share the... You know?
I won't vote yes on this policy unless those pauses and the security updates are in it. Nor will I vote for any trip overseas, period. Unless we have the ability to make... Unless the board has the ability to review the security situation and vote accordingly. And/or not vote. Or just pass if it's... If there's nothing changed.
Carl, I would suggest we table it and go back and determine whether...
How are we gonna determine it? Let's determine it right now.
Can I... May I finish?
Sure.
And determine whether that kind of policy will mean that the teachers are not gonna go forward with trips. Cause if the teachers aren't gonna go forward with trips, there's no point in having a policy. We'll just say there will be no international travel sponsored by the board. And that'll, that'll just be it.
Why would this board be held hostage to what the teachers wanna do?
No, 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 no. That, that's. Duke, it's not a held hostage situation. For me, it's if, if we're gonna have a policy that we're never gonna have the trips, why have the policy?
That's not what we're saying at all, Richard. That's not what we've said all night here. What we said is we want checkpoints to review the security situation of the trips that are going overseas. I see nothing wrong with adding the wording that George proposed and that what Carl proposed. If we can do that, which George outlined, that we could do that, we can pass this policy tonight.
I, I think what he was saying is, no matter if that is our policy, the end result will be, no one will have a trip. Not that we're saying they can't have a trip, they're gonna just not.
That's an assumption.
That's the end result.
And that's why we're asking to table it and to determine if that assumption is valid or not.
Well, if you ask them, oh, no, I don't wanna do that work, if you ask them. But if this is the policy that we come up with, yeah, we don't know that. I'd say this is the board policy, just like any other policy we pass.
I'm, I'm, I would like to vote on it tonight, but I am also willing to table it and we can approach them. I can tell you that if they say they're not gonna be part of it, I'm still gonna put these in there. Under no circumstances will I change my opinion because they won't go on the trip. I won't have these trips without proper oversight by the board and security updates. There won't be the trips and that's fine. If that's the way they want it, we could vote right now and just eliminate the trips.
But I, I would ask that we, I would ask that we take a break because I think we're getting upset over an assumption. I, I think we're, we're stating that teachers are gonna do certain things and that was what I said, I believe, could happen.
We have no idea.
We don't know. I would, I'm speaking from, if I was a person in their place and I had these rules, I would probably, as a teacher, say, I, I don't wanna go through that. I've gone through it once, I probably don't wanna go through it again. I was speaking for my opinion, not theirs. So, I would suggest that, uh, we table it like we talked about, we vote on that tabling. We see if those assumptions are true. Uh, we take, we've got another policy review coming up, I just reviewed them today. Um, and we could see where we're at and we understand, obviously, we've had a very good discussion and have a clear indication where, uh, our feelings and our, our opinions are in this area. Um, and then I think the policy committee's charge is to, we understand where we may or may not be at, uh, with bringing a policy back that may have or be missing some components that have been talked about tonight.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. But make it, make the point clear when you discuss it with them, that their decision won't impact ours, or at least mine.
I make the motion to table, um, policy twenty-three forty.
So, I could.
George, we need a vote.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
No.
Motion to table passes, four one.
We do now have, uh, we separated out the policy, so we have the gifted education policy, two, twenty-four sixty-four to consider.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent discussion.
Can you put the, can you put the policy on the, on the screen to?
This one, this policy, uh, addresses, uh, changes in the state law. Uh, so it talks about, you know, it's really a verbiage here of changing assessment instruments to gifted identification and screening instruments. Uh, it goes through and changes children, the students. Uh, there was a recent legislative change. Um, and, you know, here's some of the verbiage about occurring during the typical instructional day to allow flexibility. Uh, the policy committee went through and, uh, I think this is the original version. We crossed out some of these, uh, options here. Um, you know, they've added some that, you know, not limited to college credit plus and international baccalaureate. Uh, so everything in here is, uh, part of the new law. Uh, the WEP is a written education plan for students identified as gifted. Uh, Aaron's office oversees those. Um, and we have those in place, uh, for all of our students that are identified gifted, whether it's superior cognitive or in a English language arts, uh, mathematics. We have creativity now, right? Creativity is a category. Um, and then here, they will submit data and participate in program audits as required by the department. So, uh, this is, uh, addressing legal changes, uh, that now need to be put in the policy. And Aaron, this has to be submitted to the state by December first to share that our policy is now reflective of the, the changes in the law.
All right? No, I don't like, I mean, I don't like this policy, I don't like anything about it, quite honestly. I know it's required by law, right? So, we have to have a gifted, we have to identify these students, correct, right? I don't like calling any kid gifted. And it's not how we address children today. We do differential education, we don't have this program where we're busing the children to individual buildings. So, you're one building anymore. Um, this seems like a dinosaur to me. Um, I, I guess we have to have it, so.
We're fortunate, we're fortunate enough to have now additional teachers, personnel in each one of our buildings.
It doesn't reflect what we do, why do we have to have it?
Cause the state legislature says we do.
It's a moot point at this point.
Again, uh, Ohio Revised Code requires it, uh, the changes to it, um, keep us in compliance with Ohio Revised Code. I believe, you know, I, there is not a whole lot of, uh, requirement per se. We are already identifying, if gifted isn't the word, high-performing students, however, we wanna do that. You know, parents of those students naturally wanna make sure that Strongsville can educate their children as well as possible and can provide them challenging curriculum and provide them with an education that will recognize their gifts. In the past, we used to do that with a magnet program. We recognize that, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, um, and it's a resource and it misses out, I think, on some of the high-performing kids, uh, that don't get to go or don't choose to go to that program. Um, the differentiated instruction that we're doing now means that, uh, gifted children or high-performing children or bright children are gonna make, are gonna get challenged at the level they can regardless of what elementary school they're at. And then when everybody comes to the same middle school and to the same high school, we'll be able to have honors classes that challenge them and have curriculum that, uh, that lets them use their gifts as much as possible.
Can we call it high performing?
No, the state wants the word gifted.
We can name our policy anything we'd like to call it. We can call it high performance education and identification.
If that would please the president of the school board, I don't see any issues.
I just don't like gifted, I mean, it makes it imply like these children were born with a gift.
They are.
They are.
They're not, they're just high performing. You know, there's, I'll bet you if you look, I'll bet you if you look at the date, the birth date of all the children, of seventy-five percent of the children in this, that we've identified as gifted, I'll bet they're the oldest kids in the class, guaranteed.
No, that's wrong.
That's not wrong, I guarantee it.
I can name you five people right now that that doesn't apply to.
I'm not uncomfortable, I'm not uncomfortable with the policy.
When's her birthday?
Uh, it was in September and she started as a four-year-old in kindergarten. She's now in pharmacy school.
And she's in the first grade.
Okay, guys, let's get a vote.
Let's just vote on that.
George.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to Board of Education, other. And we got the others?
I do. Rotary's gonna be handing out dictionaries tomorrow to our, uh, how many kids? And I'll be at Kinsner and it's my favorite thing to do of the year. It's, uh, pretty cool when you give someone their own book and you ask them to put their name in it and then you ask them to look up a couple of words. It's, you know, I had one kid two years ago say, this is really my book? I'm like, yeah, it's got a lot of words in it, so.
It's lexicographic.
Yeah, it's just an awesome day, so.
That's great. We thank you for the Rotary for joining us.
Last home game tomorrow night, get out and support the high school football team, four and four. Going for five and four tomorrow night. Hear me, coach?
Yeah.
Can I tack on?
Sure.
So, it is senior night, so we'll be, uh, recognizing our seniors in golf, call, golf, cross-country, football, marching band and flag corps and the cheerleaders. Um, so that's always a great event. It is the opportunity for the ticket holder to win their two thousand seventeen Chevy Trax. There are some tickets still available, so if you want that chance, make sure to get them before the raffles, uh, drawn. If you wanna buy them after, I still will take your money. And, uh, Saturday is the, uh, Strongsville Athletic Boosters Night at the Races. So, a good time will be had by all.
And the other others? We've got a work session on Thursday, November second, seven o'clock right here and a regular meeting on November sixteenth, right here. And we do have need for executive session.
Yes, Mr. Neso, uh, to consider the employment of a public employer official.
The motion?
Negotiations update, purpose of negotiations.
And to review negotiations.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Vote.
Who made the motion? The original motion? Was it Colonel?
What?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Enter an executive session at eight forty-five?
Sounds like a plan.
Don't leave.
No public business afterwards.